Responsive.
It is 10 o'clock and this workshop session of the city council is in order. We begin with public comments, if anyone would like to address an item on the agenda. And then you may do so at this time. That may be in form of a question or whatever, and we will come back to that later. I will say that the item 3B is off the agenda, the active shooter training. And we will deal with that at another time. All right, then let's move to item two, information and discussion. Ms. McLehannon?
Briefing and possible action regarding preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus.
So before the chief starts, just real quick, and I've got a copy coming down, but as all of you are aware, the mayor issued an emergency declaration yesterday. And so you get a copy of that to see what it specifically says, but it was pretty well summarized in the press conference that we had. And the chief's going to go into a little more detail on some of that. And we're really, today's session is about answering your questions and questions that you might be getting from the public, you know, since we've met last. The other thing is Shelley is talking to the secretary of state about elections and what options we've got. We've not got any definitive guidance on that at this point, but we're in constant contact with them as well as the county who administers our elections, because it obviously affects their primary runoff as well. So we'll be getting you information on that as soon as we know. And then city council meetings, we anticipate that your Friday special call meeting on the same subject will continue just like we're doing today. But we are looking at alternatives for your regular meeting next Tuesday, including teleconferencing and a way to dispatch people in, meaning the public, to comment and participate in the meeting without being here. So all that's in the works, and you'll hear more as that comes together or not. But with that, I'm going to turn over to the chief, and he, we've got a special guest here also from HEB who he'll introduce after he's done making some comments. Chief?
Thank you, city manager. Good morning, mayor and members of council. On March 10th, Tuesday of last week, we spent some time with you as a council, and we just provided an overview for you of COVID-19, what was happening there. And I think some of the information we shared with you was the facts and figures, we discussed with you, the signs and symptoms, and protective actions you could take, not only here in the council chambers, but at home to stop the spread of germs. We even discussed with you our NXH, which specifically deals with a...
Ethan, I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little bit?
We specifically shared with you a little information on NXH, which deals with a pandemic or, you know, a virus similar to what COVID-19 is. And then we talked to you about what the city was doing, you know, moving into phase three of the pandemic plan. On yesterday, the city manager has mentioned there was a joint press conference held, where in that press conference, you know, the goal of the mayor and the group that was assembled on yesterday was just to share with the community the latest information that was available to us, that both you and the community could have. As the city manager said, everything is fluid. It's constantly moving. Yesterday, when we held the press conference, the CDC had just issued guidelines that recommended that no mass gatherings in excess of 50 people be held. That has now changed, and the recommendation is 10. The city manager discussed in the press conference, the mayor provided the community with information regarding the disaster declaration that was issued on yesterday, which basically allows him to take whatever protective measures he needs to combat COVID-19 in the city of Kerrville. As of noon on yesterday, I'll share with you what the CDC numbers and what's been reported out of John Hopkins University that's tracking the coronavirus numbers across the world. In the world, there's been, as of noon yesterday, 179,073 confirmed COVID-19 cases in the world. Of that total number of cases, there's been 7,074 deaths. In the United States, 4,138 confirmed cases and 71 deaths. In Texas, 57 confirmed cases. And when we did the press conference on yesterday, there was zero deaths in the state of Texas. But it's now been reported that Texas has its first death, 91-year-old gentleman in Matagorda, Texas. So when we take a look at Kerrville today, as of today, there's been no COVID-19 cases reported, and we're not aware of any COVID-19 cases in the city of Kerrville or in Kerr County. However, we shouldn't get lax in our approach to taking whatever action we need to make sure we protect the community, because simply that there's been none reported here, it doesn't mean we're out of harm's way or a death. It won't turn up here in Kerrville. So I also want to just touch bases with you on some things that the community is doing that I think we commended them on yesterday in the press conference. And, you know, as a council, you know, I think it's what you want to see the community doing. They're heeding the information that the CDC is providing, that we're sharing with them, and they're doing what they can do to basically support our efforts and slow or stop the spread of COVID-19 in our community. So to give you just a snapshot of what that looks like, Chick-fil-A closed the dine-in service, and they're only allowing, they only have their drive-thru open. We have HEB here, Greg Nichols, he's going to provide you an overview of what HEB is doing and what the supply chain looks like now and, you know, what will happen in the future. Walmart has changed its hours. It's no longer open 24 hours. It's opening at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, closing at 11:00 p.m. at night. The Kerr County Jail has suspended visitation until further notice. Peterson Regional Medical Center has implemented visitor screening and other restrictions. The Little League is, I think they've gotten a decision on yesterday that to suspend the Little League games. I'm not sure the date on that. I'll get that updated and get it to you. The local churches are implementing social distancing. It's a practice that we've recommended, the CDC has recommended, and you can see it happening in this room today with the distance we put between people. It's a practice where you just put a little distance between you and the next person. Notre Dame School, at the direction of the Archdiocese of San Antonio, is closed until Friday, April 3rd. Our Lady of the Hills has also suspended school. Shriner University will open after spring break, but are making internal modifications, and they've closed a diner to the public. Starbucks has removed all chairs and all condiments behind the counter in response to the mass gathering recommendations coming from the city and the CDC. The Dietrich Center has canceled all functions, with the exception of their Meals on Wheels program. And then Playhouse 2000 has canceled a scheduled performance that was due to take place on Saturday, and I think it was called Celtic Angels Ireland. So with that, I'll ask Greg to come up and give you an overview of what's happening with HEB, and then I'll be back to make myself available for any questions, if you have any.
Morning, council.
Morning.
Thanks for letting me come. I apologize for the dress, but I've been up since 2:00 a.m. this morning and dealing with some supply chain issues that we're trying to fill. So kind of let me give you an update on what HEB is doing. We have a COVID-19 conference call every day about 11 o'clock to give us a whole company update. We also have a COVID-19 website set up for all of our partners that they can go to if they have any questions or feel like they're coming down with anything. There's a Blue Cross Blue Shield nurse on call 24/7, 365 days a year. It's free for all of our 107,000 partners to use. We've extended medical leave to everybody, whether they're part-time or full-time, or whether they're even on our medical plan. If they happen to come down with COVID-19, or any family member comes down with it, then if they're out for the required 14-day quarantine period, then they're paid for that period of time, too. From a maintenance standpoint, we have kind of shut down our floral departments right now to ship those bodies into other areas of the store. We've shut down our hot table in the deli. We have prepackaged all of our bread. We will stop making bread as of today, as far as through the bakery, because we're shifting those resources into other areas of the store. So once we're out there, we'll be out. But we have prepackaged everything where it used to be, where you could just grab it and package it yourself. Olive Bar has been shut down and prepackaged, so all of that's out there. And then sliced meats and cheeses, starting tomorrow, will pretty much start just prepackaging all of that, from a social distancing standpoint for that. In the next two days, you'll see all of our check stands across the whole state of Texas. They'll have sneeze guards put on in between our checkers and the customers, so that there's a little bit more protection, not only for the customer, but for our partners, too. We're lining them up, our hours are, operating hours are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and we did that strictly so that we had more time to restock every day, because there's a lot of panic buying going on right now. So we have the limits in place in a number of different areas. But for example, toilet paper is running out about every 30 minutes, an hour in every store across our whole state. It's not because we're not getting toilet paper in, because we're getting toilet paper in every single night. It's just that we seem to have a hoarding situation going on where people are coming in every day and buying toilet paper. And so it's water, we're in good shape in water, we're in good shape company-wide in toilet paper. It's just a matter of when you try to ship what it takes to fill a whole aisle, that's really a whole trailer load and a half. So we're trying to queue out the trailers as best we can each night. So we're averaging about seven to nine trailers a day into the store just from our warehouses. Each trailer holds about 30 to 32 pallets, depending on the length of the trailer. So for an example, last night, we got 85 pallets just on dry grocery in, and it doesn't look like that today, but that's what was put into the store last night. So we're, right now, just shipping categories that we're seeing that are just flying out. So it's categories like, you know, we continue to get fresh bread in, milk. We're not getting all milks, it's mainly just gallons, paper towels. We're shipping dry dog food, 32 ounces or more every other day now, because that cubes out, the trailer's a little less, and we can ship some other things. So those are just some things that we're doing. We've added hand sanitizer dispensers in each front lobby as you walk in, so that people have those. There's hand sanitizers at every register. We continue to clean like we always have done. We have a quality assurance team that manages us throughout the state, but we also have a total sanitation team that comes in every night, and has in every store before this, that they completely sanitize everything down. They hit all the cooler doors, all the handles, everything else. We just have started doing that a little bit more since all this has been going on. Curbside, our instructions to our Kirby's that go out to the folks that have ordered is that the customer does not touch the iPad, and they social distance from the window and kind of tell them what their substitutions are, and then they load them, and they're on their way at that point. I guess the best thing I can tell you guys is the common theme that we're having out there is that we just need to somehow calm the public, that there's plenty of adequate food out there. It's not a matter of there's not food out there, it's a matter of the supply chain being able to get it out there. So what we have shifted, we've added, gone out and bought a lot more trailers, a lot more that. We have hired some additional drivers that aren't driving for Cisco, because some restaurants are shut down. So we continue to add drivers, just employ them temporarily to continue to bring stuff to our stores. Some of our drugstore delivery drivers, like Budweiser and all that, when they're not driving for them, they're picking up loads for us and bringing them to the store. So we started that as of yesterday.
It's good for drivers, too.
Produce, just yesterday alone, was about three times what we normally ship, is what was ordered across the whole capacity. So in produce, it's a matter, we're just trying to get big commodities, bananas, potatoes, that kind of stuff. We're not shipping some of the bagged vegetables and that kind of stuff that are convenience items. We're just trying to get bagged fruit and the basics into the stores at this point. We had a ton of ground beef land in our warehouse yesterday, and when I say a ton, it's not, it's just a lot.
We believe you if you say a ton.
Yeah, so they, they're getting that out to the stores. We got a bunch more in this morning, we got chicken in again this morning and everything else. As a company, we're making a $2 million commitment to the food banks across the state by providing cash support for them to go out and purchase anything they need. We're partnering with Meals on Wheels to try to get kids and elderly some meals. You know, I know one of the questions is how do we get the elderly in there quicker or that? We're still working through that as a company. How do we do that fairly and without getting somebody hurt? Right now, we're basically bringing in 50 people at a time in the mornings. We're lining them up outside. We have someone going down the line with hand sanitizer, people want to do that. Social distancing is about the length of a shopping cart to somebody else, so if they'll stay within that distance, they'll be pretty good in the line. So that's kind of what we're doing. That's the best update I can give you, I mean, without going into a lot of detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for this update and for all that you're doing. I have a question about the curbside. I would guess that that was encouraged, but there may be some delay in the timing of that. I know I went on yesterday to try and do a curbside order, and that might be a little bit complicated right now, so what would you say about that?
Yeah, so what we've done statewide, and we just opened it back up, is we reduced everything down to only about 30% capacity on curbside this last week, because we just had such a surge. And so we felt like that would get us through kind of the surge. What it did was it just shifted it day by day. So we opened it up a little bit yesterday to 60%. We're at 100% capacity this morning for us. We're going to see how that goes. But as you know, if you order curbside, you're going to have a lot of substitutions right now, just because we're out of stuff. We're trying to take it off the website as quick as we run out, but there's some delay there, just based on the volume that's happening.
Okay, good. But that would, I mean, I would think that that would be a good practice if it works.
Yeah, it's a great practice. Problem is, our limitations are, and, you know, I'm welcome to, if you guys want to walk through at some point, I'll show you how kind of curbside works in the store, but we're limited on refrigeration capacity and frozen food capacity, and that's a whole separate little area there. And so we run about 1,100, 1,200 customers through there a week, a pretty good basket order per, and that takes 1,100 people off the parking lot, which is great. But that's about our capacity at this particular, now the new store, we'll be able to do probably about three times that, but at this point, that's our capacity rate where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Brenda, I just want to say thank you to HEB and your staff. You know, we could all have that type of sentiment.
You're on the front lines.
Response, things would be a lot different.
Well, I appreciate the comment.
I really do appreciate what you guys are doing, and the family and the corporation.
And the calming measures that that provides the community on top of everything else, too, just...
And I appreciate you working with Meals on Wheels and those that need that extra help, so it's wonderful.
Yeah, there'll be more to come, and we'll announce some of that as we kind of partner with them and see what, how that's going to work. A lot depends on how long the schools are being closed, because we're going to try to get some kids fed, because we know there's a need out there.
And that was my concern, too.
But talking to the superintendents yesterday, they, right now, they're still on for next week, they didn't know for sure. So we'll just see how that works.
Well, thank you for your donation, too, because I've been concerned about if, in fact, on Thursday, they do keep the schools closed, there will be kids who won't have lunches or breakfast that they would typically get at school. So I'm, I'm going to, I was going to reach out to Dr. Faust and others, principals of schools, and just see, is there anything we could be doing as a community to help, you know, help that out, help that situation out, as far as food at least, for the kids? Meals on Wheels, speaking with Brenda Thompson at Dietrich is perfect. I mean, she'll gladly show you how you can help there, but thank you, that's great to know.
If the schools do close, they're making arrangements for some drive-through, deliver, you know, go through and pick up the meals.
Oh, that's great.
With the kids.
Well, y'all are already on top of that.
Well, the school district is.
Well, yeah, I'm sure they were probably thinking about it.
From the HEB staff, what are you, what are you hearing people wanting to know, anxious about, you know, that kind of thing? I know it's pretty general, but...
Yeah, it's, you know, mainly just, you know, it's the common question, when are you getting toilet paper back in? When are you getting water back in? You know, are you going out of business? You know, that kind of stuff. What I would tell everybody, I mean, and y'all know this, I'm not preaching to the crowd, but if you look across the whole U.S. right now, it's just not us, it's everybody out there. There's these runs on grocery stores that, and I've been doing this for 43 years, even though I only have 31 of my name badges with HEB, but I did it with 12 years with Randall's before that. I've never in the history of seen this, even hurricanes or anything else, this is kind of unprecedented. And, you know, quite frankly, it's not a matter of, it's not out there, it's out there. It's just getting it into the warehouses, and the warehouses being able to get it out to the stores, and then the stores being able to just restock. Typically, a new store, we take a whole month, we just trailer after trailer after trailer running in to fill it, and that's not open. So, I mean, you're going to see that when we open the new one, but trying to refill what people are coming in and constantly buying the same things over and over and over, that's what's causing it.
Yeah. Are you experiencing Kerrville kindness in the store?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's been great. I mean, we haven't had any fights break out. I mean, the general public's been, I mean, very, very good. They've been very appreciative of all of our staff and everything else, and, I mean, it's been pretty lighthearted, so, I mean, and that, but that's the way Kerrville is. So I can't speak for the rest of the state of Texas, but I know it's been fine here. We do have a security guard, you know, every morning when we open, and that's just to kind of calm fears, if anybody thought there was going to be riots or that kind of stuff. But everybody's been, I mean, very good about coming in orderly and not pushing, and, you know, we have someone that's handicapped that we put in front of somebody, that they're fine with it, so we haven't had any issues.
I have to say that I firsthand experienced the, that hospitality when I was in line at 7:45 on Sunday morning. They're walking down the line with a squirt of sanitizer, and by the way, here's your breakfast bar. So, and it has a calming effect, so just another great way that HEB takes care of the community.
That's good.
The, well, I was going to ask, but I don't think we need to go there, but it seems like some of the, HEB's responses over the years to disasters relates to this, but as you mentioned, it's a different deal.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't bring it up, but we have a whole disaster team that as soon as a disaster hits, we open that command center, and they're on until it's over. So there's probably about 75 to 100 people that are in that, and it's from all ends of the company, from transportation to warehousing to IT to that. But we have an emergency manager on staff, that that's all he does. He monitors weather, he monitors that, so he gives us an update, just like the chief did, on how many deaths in the state of Texas, if any, and how many cases and all that. We have a, you know, a mobile kitchen, we have some mobile pharmacies that we can put in, mobile water, everything else. So, you know, we've been doing, this isn't our first rodeo, so to speak, as far as disasters. It's just, this is kind of unprecedented as far as the runs on the stores. We're used to seeing runs on the stores, if it's a hurricane...
It's a coast, yeah.
Or, you know, there's some flooding and that kind of stuff, but this is kind of statewide.
And, and not a timeline, we don't have a definite time as to when it might change.
Right.
Like when hurricanes gone and relief comes in, and so, yeah, it's different.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, Grace. Hope you get some sleep tonight.
No, we'll do fine, we'll survive. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg, for coming over at a short notice. There's just one more item I want to mention to the council, and you may have saw it, those of you who've had the chance to watch the news conference. We do have a joint operations center set up with Peterson and the county, and our emergency operations center. There is a, the ability to provide email from the citizens to send an email in, but there's also a hotline that they'll be answering, the most frequently asked questions. It's going to be open from 8 to 5, and then afterwards, we'll have a recorded line available for after hours. So I think that's, that concludes what I had to say to you today. I'll take any questions you might have.
Will you repeat that number, the hotline?
It's 258-1111.
Okay, council, you have questions?
Yes.
Including questions that you've been asked that we might need to clarify?
I do. About testing, so I actually spoke with my primary care physician this morning about how she handles screening, and she was, she told me that the way it works is if, they're screening everyone, no matter why, they're there for their appointment, and if it looks like they have any kind of symptoms, they will, they have to request the state for the test, is that correct?
There's a testing site in San Antonio.
So how does that work logistically? Person comes into the doctor's office, that person is suspicious, perhaps, they do the swab, do they have the ability to do the swab there?
Now, I don't know if the local physicians' offices have the ability to do the test.
So they'd refer them?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let me back up now. This is kind of out of my lane, but I'll do the best I can with it. They're going to have to meet a certain criteria in terms of signs and symptoms, and everybody that, you know, has a cold or feels like symptoms, doesn't necessarily meet that criteria of, you know, what is shown for COVID-19. So the information that's been provided is, you know, contact your physician, and then they would either, here at Kerrville, be referred to Peterson, you know, which then would refer them to the testing facility for COVID-19 in San Antonio.
Okay, I was just curious what, what process was in place in case, in case someone did not pass the screening at the physician's office?
Yeah, they have to, they have to go through the screening first, and then our EMS is also very plugged into all this, and they know how to refer people to get the testing if they're pretty certain that this is, you know, a potential case. But they're going to rule out other things first.
Right.
So they may be doing some testing, but it's not necessarily for COVID-19 locally.
There's really good protocol online, if you'll just look it up.
Okay.
There's excellent resources from the CDC that tells you what the steps are if you think you've been exposed, or if you're exhibiting symptoms, and it tells you, it does it just, call your doctor, do this, do this, do this.
I think some of the people I've been talking to were under the impression they would be tested at their physician's office that day, and I, I didn't think that was correct, so I just wanted to verify.
Yeah, I don't believe the individual physicians have the ability to do that.
So that actually looks like a citizen traveling to San Antonio to a facility with a referral to get tested?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It may be that the testing is available locally, once they get enough of that out, but right now, we don't have it.
Mayor, is there, are there transport options considered, if someone is severe?
That's why EMS is involved in coordination with the hospital.
The coordinated effort.
Because they track all the cases, and they want to know who, and so they're, they want to know specifically where you're coming from, where you're going.
So in that extreme case, we could see our EMS transporting to San Antonio?
Absolutely. If someone presented in Kerrville with COVID-19 symptoms, that would be a dialogue between Kerrville Fire and EMS with Peterson, and they may not be transported to Peterson. Our EMS may transport them to San Antonio.
Wouldn't that look like them potentially coming back to Kerrville for hospital-type quarantine that's available? Just to be determined if something like that happens? Because I know we've got, the hospital has, has space.
Yeah, it could be treatment at the hospital, or it could be self-quarantine, you know, at their home.
I understand from my doctor, though, that it's a pretty stringent screening process, so it's not like, there may be some, you know, weaknesses with that. There's, it's a pretty strict screening process, so it's, you're pretty, if someone were to test, they would have been ruling out a whole lot of other things, so...
That's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The press conference yesterday was very good, very good.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'll go after that.
Well, mine's not for chief.
Oh, okay. So the daily briefing sheet we talked about last week, where you kind of have that updated list, does that, where does that get pushed out beyond, beyond your command center, so to speak?
We have it on our website. You're, are you talking about where I gave the...
The stats.
Numbers in the world, the US and Texas. Yeah, we, we just started it last week. It's something that we update on a weekly basis.
So it's a weekly update?
Yes.
Okay.
We will put it on the website, although it's, what we have up today is last week's information, because we've been snowballing with everything else. But I'll get it updated in today.
That's, you're right, you're right, that's not the first priority. I did, I had another question, and this may be Mark or chief. I had a question from a member of the community saying that... I had a question from a member of the community saying that they were aware of an event in a neighboring community that would draw a larger number of people, perhaps. I don't have any knowledge of this event, per se, but is there coordination or any kind of, I wouldn't say influence, but any kind of conversation that, that our community may have with neighboring communities if there's, you know, knowledge of a larger event taking place near where we are, just to have that coordination of? I find that hard to believe that, that a neighboring community would have a larger event right now, but if, but what, what would we potentially do in that situation?
So, go ahead, Chief.
The community you're speaking of, is it in Kirk County?
No, it's in a adjoining county.
Okay, so there's a, first, let me start with Kirk County. You know, the city is coordinating countywide with Kirk County, and then with Peterson also. The conference call that we have with the state is, there are several conference calls we do, one that's statewide, and we do one specifically for our Department of State Health Services region, which would be all the counties in the ACOG region. So the information that's coming to us is coming to those surrounding counties, and the recommendations and coordination should be happening similar without knowing the specific event. I mean.
I would want to check it before I would.
Just about everybody is.
I still have to believe, you can't, I mean.
You can't make.
People have to use their common sense if they know it's a large gathering and they've been warned and warned and warned not to go to large gatherings, the city or the county or the state can't be responsible for those people.
I don't think it's a responsibility, it's just a, a conversation, you know.
So, in addition to what the chief provided, we communicate on a regular basis with other city managers in the region, and we've already been talking about how we're dealing with council meetings, how we're dealing with just a number of issues. And so the issue really we have is each community is making their own decisions about what those limits are. There's recommendations from the CDC, but it's only the mayor and the county judge that can do that declaration and say, you will not have these events over. So we've chosen to make recommendations, a lot of cities have done that, some cities have made it mandatory. But each, each community stands alone in terms of their jurisdiction and their authority for their emergency declarations.
Right.
And I will say, council member, that I described some of the actions that just our community partners are taking, you know. Looks like most are heeding the warnings, and that's not just happening at a local level. It seems like on a national level, people are really taking this serious and taking the appropriate actions. But, you know, it's not impossible to have somebody that, that doesn't heed the recommendations.
I think, I think the fear is just, if no, if, if, you know, is there any, is there any coordination, just have that discussion about what would potentially happen if, if, you know, there was a spread and there were people coming in, including our community, based on an event that was taking place over in a week, over a weekend type situation? So, I said I would ask, and the other one is about communication. I was asked, you know, if someone's not on social media and they don't have access to the usual means of communication, things, things that we may be able to do in addition to that. I mean, that's always the challenge, right? And, you know, the, you know, some messages in utility billing, or, or how else can we push the messaging beyond what we're already doing for people that may not have those primary controls that the city is using to push out their messaging?
I think that's the primary reason, if not, well, it's the main reason, that we opened the EOC, the Joint Operation, is so that we could push information out. It's not that we really have a 24-hour emergency that we're managing seven days a week, although we're monitoring very closely. That, the real, real reason for opening that is to improve communications and coordination. So the best thing they can do is call that number. And, but if they, if they don't have access to the computer, now, the computer's going to have a whole lot more information. Our own website has local information, it also has links to pertinent information for the region and the state and beyond, CDC. So that is really good information. And the newspaper's been also putting out a lot of good information about the local situation.
Right, in my mind, the phone number, if, if you're, if you're limited on any other kind of communications, just knowing that phone number, if that's, if that's, everybody can hopefully dial that phone number. So, I mean, something as simple as, you know, changing the messaging in utility billing to say, you know, here's the phone number with a, you know, for up-to-date information, here's the website, just those little things in every opportunity that we can beyond, beyond the normal messaging that we send out.
We can look at the utility bill.
That would be a good idea.
Chief, from what Councilman Cochran said, I think we continue to point everybody to the CDC website. Now, in meeting Friday afternoon, we were asking, okay, are we all saying the same thing on our website? And everybody, hospital, school district, city, so forth, said, we're using the info from CDC. And so that continues to be a, a go-to place that's pretty basic. And then for local information, then the local website, city, fire department, and school, county.
Yeah, I think you're right. We've done a number of public safety announcements and those on the website, you know, we have tried to get as much information as we possibly can on the website. And then there's links to, to the CDC to try to make it easy for people to access what the CDC is saying and what they're recommending. And like Councilman Cochran said, there's just a ton of information there from the CDC. Even, I think our last meeting, Councilmember Seagman, he had a question about travel, you know, he talks specifically about travel, if you're, you know, traveling to the different zones, what they recommend, you know. So you can find just about anything you want. And we'll continue to do the best we can to, to make sure that through PSAs and print media and everything we do.
And I think we ought to, I mean, the public needs to be warned that there is so much misinformation out there also. Don't, don't get your information off Facebook, don't get your information off one of the other social media sites. Go to the, go to the expert.
Right.
Because unfortunately, there's so many people out there trying to take advantage of us at this point in time.
And that's why I asked the question about the update on the stats, because I've gotten several people come to me, you know, on a regular basis, you know, are there any cases? Are there any cases? Are there any cases? Or I heard, I heard, I heard. And as a, you know, as a council member, I, you know, have reached out to Mark, and it's my understanding that that pipeline will come to us through you, once there is a confirmed case. And so that's what I'm telling the public now. But, you know, just to let anyone know that wants to know here in Curville, Texas, right now, what's the most up-to-date information? And I will back that up and just say, it's certainly not a criticism. I, I probably didn't compliment you in, as much as I should have on what you are doing. My comment is really more geared towards those people that just don't use what we consider to be the everyday tools, like getting online or, you know, checking social media, whatever, whatever it is, just to make sure those people don't get, you know, that group of citizens don't get left out of, out of the, you know, information chain.
Well, and I think this is where we can encourage a personal responsibility if you've got a neighbor, if you've got somebody that you know may not have access to that kind of information, that it's a personal responsibility of ours to reach out to them and make sure that, that they do know.
You know, even if there was a PDF or something that we could print with local information, or we could, you know, have on, if, if, for someone to print and give to a neighbor or to, you know, to hand off, if, if that's something that we could do, that's a great idea as well, just.
I have one more quick question. If there were to be a confirmed case, how?
It's when.
No, it's if.
I mean, there's a lot of, I've heard talk that people think there has been a case and we just don't want them to know it, and, and I've said, no, that's not true. We, we'd report the facts, whatever they are. But is there a certain protocol for how that would be handled as far as making that announcement? That there was a case?
It would be announced.
Probably in the CDC, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
It would be updated through the CDC and confirmed, just like I gave you the numbers this morning, that here's what we have in Texas. As of yesterday, that was zero deaths, but now there's one, and it's been in matter of order. So we're not going to be able to hoard that information. It's going to become public, and not just by us, but it's going to make the national news.
So one other thing in terms of, we're talking about bad, bad information on the internet, apparently there are some malicious sites, email sites that said COVID-19 information or whatever. You click on it and you got trouble. So we've got to be, we need to be careful.
Go to the CDC. That's the only one.
And I think one of the things we highlighted yesterday is that, you know, CDC is where we're going to get, you know, is the direction that we're following in the recommendations. They are the professional authority to be able to make those recommendations and determination.
Right.
I have some other questions that I'd like to direct to the city manager regarding the COVID-19 situation. Is that still appropriate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mark, could you just give us an update? I'm, you know, as in my limited knowledge of looking at city budgets, how do you all, and I know y'all are working on this, but how do you foresee the impact, short-term, long-term, sales tax, hot money, property taxes?
So we don't know, because we, the world's really never experienced anything like this in modern time. And so we're, we're looking at worst case. And so I've already, for example, advised the staff that there's no more travel and training until further notice, that we're going to have a hiring slowdown, which means that if it's not a police and fire position, that we're going to, it's got to go through me to be approved, be filled, so, you know, we're, when you're 80 to 90% staff, that's where your, most of your costs are. And so it's balancing that also, though, than having enough people that are going to be well enough and healthy enough to carry out the services, because City Hall still has to run. We still have to have police and fire and.
Water.
And, and water and, you know, the central services. So that's, that's where the priority has been placed. But, you know, when you look at sales tax and go back to the recession, we saw a 10% dip, and, you know, that wasn't that significant, quite frankly. So we, you know, we're looking at, what if it's more than that? And then what hap, what, what happens? We've got great reserves, and that's what they're there for. We also have contingency funding, which is that, that's what it's there for, built into the operating budget. And then, you know, other than that, when you look at hotel tax, we've got a very large reserve for hotel tax. We have some plans for possibly using some of that, but we, we have it and we won't until we know what the future holds. So I think we're in great shape financially, and we're already taking steps to make sure that, you know, we can endure for several months. And that's, that's what, that's why we have that policy about our fund balance, and that's what it's there for. It's 15%, but we're, we're well above that in terms of our reserve. So financially, we're already looking at what might happen and taking appropriate steps.
I know, I know you will keep us updated as, as changes are made, but I'm, again, I'm thinking of the, the guy that's working at the restaurant that all of a sudden is not working at the restaurant anymore, and his water bill and electric bill and all those things are going to be coming due, and we're going to have to have at least some sort of a plan of how we're going to work with those people and assist to get them through that period of time, either, you know, waive late fees or, I don't know what it's going to be, but I, and I know y'all are talking about that, but I would like to be kept up to speed on that as we.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have another one?
That was it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Danny, Greg, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session? We're ready to 551-072, 551-087.
I make a motion that we adjourn the executive session under section 551.072, 551.087.
I'll second that.